For too many decades, Tennessee has ranked in the bottom 10 among the least healthy states. But because thousands of people across the state are joining the movement to be more active.
Here.
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 Public hearing is on ordinance number 643 for the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget amendment. Is there anyone here would like to speak on that? Hear a motion to adjourn public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing's adjourned. Regular agenda. Call to order, roll call please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farrow.
Here.
Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Councilman Gann. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
My father, we thank thee for the blessings that you've bestowed on us. We thank thee for our city and for its citizens for many things that sometimes we take for granted. We pray that you be with us as we deliberate the business of the city. We pray that you be with us as we try to do whatever we can to move our city and its citizens forward, always keeping in mind what is best for all concerned. Lead, guide, and direct us now as we go about our business, be with us individually and collectively as we go through the coming weeks, for tonight and we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks Larry. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of amendments of the previous meeting dated June 24th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, recognize any visitor or citizen that'd like to speak at this time? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Communications from the mayor, I have a few things. First of all, I do have some board appointments I couldn't get to last time. CUB, I'd like to reappoint Dr. Penny Harrell to another four-year term, term ending July 1st, what is that, 2023? Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and a third. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under E911, I have two appointments. I'd like to reappoint Jim Sanderson to another four-year term, term ending July 1st, 2023. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Joe Roberts, I talked to him today and he's been on the board for eight years and he just feels like with his job at Y12, he's just not able to make enough meetings to really fulfill his obligation. So I'll be putting someone else on that board next month. Also, just a couple of things. First of all, I do want to say, we finished the best six days of summer last week and I just want to thank everyone that's really involved. ET works his butt off and I don't know how he does it, to be honest with you. I'm just there for five or six hours a night and it's so hot and you're on your feet and it's exhausting. But I'm not going to name to me a lot of people just because I'll forget somebody and then I get a phone call when I get home. But I really want to thank everyone who volunteers. Nobody makes money on this. It's just something we do for the community. And I don't quote Mike Farley too often, but you know, one thing he says that I always keep in mind of, that you know, this is, this is, a lot of our kids in this community, this is their Disney world. This is their Dollywood. And I think it really, it just, it just makes things exciting and new for them and they're able to be in that environment for a few hours. And to me, that's what's, what it's all about. So, one more thing I wanted to bring up. Got several calls today with the issue at Eagle Bend area as far as a black tar, a black substance that's been seen on cars, on driveways, sidewalks, and there is some concern there. And I just want to share the people that's listening, it's a concern for us too. We think it might be coming from a plant somewhere that the scrubber's messed up or whatever. But I've talked to Tim Thompson a couple of times today. Roger and I spoke a couple of times today and we're certainly looking into this to see what the issue is, if there is an issue. Just wanted to let everyone know about that. And that's all I have. Community reports, city school board report. Kelly's not here. Scott, did you have anything you just want to pass your budget, budget amendment for?
No, we don't have a budget amendment. I guess I'm here to answer any questions about the stuff that might be allowed. Are any facilities cafeteria?
Politics, anything?
How's the, how's the attendance looking so far? Do you have those numbers? The weighted average attendance? I do not. Enrollment is relatively, we're down a little bit from last year, but no major concerns. We're hoping to...
Is that pretty consistent this time of year?
Yes.
I mean, you'll get influx of students coming in that first week.
Correct. We don't, we, I can say our sixth grade at North Clinton has increased, which is a great, great thing.
Good.
So, focus on that.
Well, I think that's, again, I've said it before, I think it's a compliment to Blaze and a lot of the additional sports that are available and not to mention the continued strong education they receive at that, at the elementary school too.
It is. As far as finance and facilities go, I can just kind of, for a school report, it's not as exciting as what Kelly brings to you, but you know, kind of what we've done as far as facilities this year, we spent about $120,000 on cameras for security and asset safety, $25,000 for our bleachers at Clinton. We've done about $10,000 in lighting fixes and improvements and that's all been internal. We've managed all that with our own labor. Lot of the savings that you get on retrofitting lighting is absorbed when you pay an outside vendor to do the project. HVAC, we're replacing as needed. We don't have any big projects on the near-term, one-year, two-year horizon. Bought a $10,000 new mower for South Clinton. The new scoreboards at Clinton Elementary Gym, about $8,000. And the, one of the things that oddly enough, I'm excited about is, we spent about $10,000 on music equipment and a kiln at South Clinton, which is lovely for our kids. So, as far as facilities go, sorry I'm leaving money at the podium here, those are our big things that we've accomplished this year. Technology-wise, we always spend a good amount of money on our technology and I'll leave that for Danny to comment on, but our kids are taken care of. From a classroom, from a former classroom teacher in another system, I really appreciate technology that works and that's updated. And when it doesn't happen, it's frustrating from a teacher's perspective. We don't have that problem at Clinton City School, so.
Okay.
I guess that will have to do for Kelly's report.
Any questions for Scott?
Yes, Mr. Ray, going into a budget cycle, some of the schools, and I just understand some county's schools, have the same problem of creating the cafeteria budget side to any budget. How difficult is that going into this next year of knowing what the free lunches are going to be, because I think it ranges differently every year? How difficult is that to slide into your budget part?
For us, it's not as problematic as for a larger system like Anderson County.
Right.
We don't experience any great fluctuations in year over year. North Clinton is what's on, it's called the community eligibility program. Every student at North Clinton eats lunch and breakfast for free at no charge regardless of standing on a free and reduced lunch application. They don't even have to apply. We have enough students at that school that receive food stamps that we qualify for a special program. South Clinton and Clinton Elementary do have to fill out free and reduced lunch applications. Off the top of my head, I'd say we're about 50/50 at Clinton. 50% free and/or reduced, or reduced. At South, probably a little bit higher, maybe 60/40. As far as how that impacts our budget, whether they're free or reduced, doesn't impact our revenue or expense. We get reimbursed from the federal government for free and reduced students. If the student is a paid student, that's our reimbursement, their payment. We still get a little money from the federal government for them as well, from USDA. Given that our expenditures are fixed with our contract with Airmark, that's very easy to budget. We pay on a per meal equivalent, so our expense will not go up or down based on food prices or labor costs. Our expense is specifically tied to number of meals served. And so that, that makes our budget a little easier. This, since you mentioned cafeteria, this is the first year since I've been here that Clinton City Schools has ended a year with a cafeteria budget and a surplus. Cafeteria historically has cost us between $100,000 and $50,000 a year. This year, we've, we're ending with about a $20,000 surplus, so that's, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission met on July the 8th. Deferred business, Alex McGruder, Juan Brewer requesting rezoning from B1 H1 to B1 for properties located at 351, 353, and 355 North Cullum Street. Prior time meeting, the Historic Zoning Commission had met and took action to recommend denial of this rezoning request. And after discussion at the Planning Commission, it also voted by vote of 42 to deny this request for rezoning. New business applicant, Thomas Hicks Construction for requesting final site plan approval for property located at Frank Price Boulevard. This is the one that we've been talking about back behind the Walgreens. And subject to some signatures and some tweaks, this also was approved. Applicant Tacala Limited requesting site plan review for property located at 2315 Charles Severs Boulevard. This is the old Long John Severs Silver's property, which will now be a Taco Bell. It will be undergoing some tremendous renovations. In fact, I think they're going to demolish it and completely turn it around facing the other way. There were some questions about stormwater, but after discussion and clarifying some things, this also was moved for approval. Black Horse Capital Partners requesting concept site plan review for property located in North Charles G. Severs Boulevard. This was a preliminary plat approval for conceptual development of a property. There was nothing specific there. This is a property that will be sinking springs, North Severs, Charles Severs Boulevard. And we approved the concept. It will be a residential as well as a business concept, but there's a, there's a number of things like preliminary site plan and, and final site plan, number of steps to go through, including some other things that we'll probably be dealing with next month. And then Aspire Foundation requesting preliminary site plan review for property located at 125 Yarnell Road, property is zone B2. This is part of the Aspire Park project. This is for a conceptual plan for a 400-acre park. This is one part of the entire project. It is the driving range section, which I believe they're choosing to call the meadow. And there was some question about water, water drainage down toward a building there and that, that will be looked at, but as far as a concept, the Planning Commission did give approval to that. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals applicant, Waffle House, requesting rear setback variance from 25 feet to 10 feet located at 2255 North Charles G. Severs Boulevard. The Waffle House will be completely, at some point, completely torn down and they're going to change the, I think they're going to change where it's facing more on the boulevard and adding some additional property. So you may be looking for a new Waffle House on the same site. And this, this was also approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Any questions for Councilman Gann? Larry had a couple. The Cindy Hicks, or I'm sorry, Kristi Hicks, does she say when they supposed, they plan on starting?
I think that depends upon her, her partner in the development, I think.
Does anybody ever ask that when y'all at the meetings? Because I always ask you.
I don't know that anybody has.
I think, I think really, there's some retail space that she's trying to deal with before
she gets into construction, directly behind Walgreens.
Right behind it?
Yeah.
I thought it was beside it.
I think, it's Don Frank Price Boulevard.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of her property is behind it and I think there's going to be like a little strip business and then her residential development.
One question about the Waffle House, since it's going to be so close to Charles Severs.
No, it will be, it's actually further back. They're going to extend the wall, you know, you've got a tremendous wall there between it and the hotels.
I thought you said it's going to go from 25 feet to 10 feet.
Well, it is, but it's going back.
From the back.
Yeah.
I got you, okay. I was just worried, if that was so close to the road.
No, it's going the other way.
Any type of barrier. Okay. Any other questions? Thanks Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman Farrow.
You can see the revenue expense summary that's been provided to you and I just wanted to comment that with water and sewer, we're in the shape that we are because sales are down and expenses are up, but we have a good cash position. We're, we have a plan to adjust that. When you look at both electric and water, our expenses have exceeded the forecast due to the, some extraordinary weather this year. We've had some fairly unprecedented, I don't know if unprecedented's the right word, but some, some wet weather that has created overtime and extra costs and expense. Another question that I filled it last month was, if you look at our days of cash, particularly on electric, you know, a year ago it was nine, now it's 21. That's because we've borrowed for some of our capital projects and that freed up cash flow to fund days of cash. And then lastly, well, two things. Flex Pay is a, is a service that CUB has pioneered and it's a, it's a success. And what it does, it allows customers to manage their bill and help ensure continuous service that helps keep from having, having the electricity turned off and then you'd have to, to pay a fee to get it turned back on. And so it's, it's allowed to customers that have budget concerns to manage their bill in such a way that it gives them some ownership of it and that's a, you know, I attribute that success to our leadership and our forward thinking over there at CUB. Lastly, General Manager has been working with TVA in attempt to modify contracts to allow our local power generators to have some flexibility in creating other avenues to create or buy electricity, not just from TVA, so to explore either solar, wind, et cetera. And we're also updating the residential policy. Timeline on that, I think should, my expectations may conflict with General Manager's, but I'm thinking in the next 30 to 60 days. The thought process is though, we're going to backdate that to when we made the motion. So anybody that's been, that wants to do work or have those policies affect them, it's going to be backdated, it's my understanding. We're also going to promote, I think it's a wise course of action to, to have some sort of event at CUB with and invite our residential friends and the public and, and chamber and stakeholders, as I would say, to come in and roll this out. And I've promised the Clinton Courier, an opportunity, and WISH to cover that. I think we should, because I think it's a, it shows, it sends a good message that, that we are, are looking to add rooftops. And rooftops drives, you know, residential and everybody in Clinton wants a Chick-fil-A, so you gotta have more rooftops. That's it.
Any questions?
I made an assumption that everybody wants a Chick-fil-A.
Oh, I'd love to have one. I just don't want to give up, you know, some of the things we enjoy here for a Chick-fil-A. But that's just my two cents. Any other questions for Zach? Thanks Zach.
Thank you.
Other board and committee reports?
Probably need to, I think we need to take note of the fact, Green McAdoo lost a tremendous friend, tragic circumstance. Cameron Boyce, who was the grandson of Joanne Allen Boyce, passed away due to a form of epilepsy in the middle of the night, apparently a very rare situation. He had been at Green McAdoo and done commercials, one of which won an Emmy promoting Green McAdoo. And his grandmother's participation is a member of the Clinton 12 and certainly was a tremendous loss to the Green McAdoo community and especially to Joanne. And I think we, we need to take note of his, his passing because he, he was very proud of his grandmother and Green McAdoo both.
Well said. Anything else?
No.
Any questions for Larry? General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you Mayor. Update on the Alpine Convenience Center. I met with Mayor Frank this morning. She said they're on schedule and should be open by October or November. And they also received their T-DOT permit last week, which will allow them to do the work on the road frontage. Finance, I'll defer to Gal on that.
You've got your finance report for June. These are very preliminary numbers. We had to do it a little bit earlier this month, so we're still missing a couple of months of state shared revenue as well as sales tax money. So that'll change, I think you'll see drastically between now and we finalize numbers. Sales tax, we were up almost eight and a half percent this month, year-to-date, we're up a little over 5%. So our sales tax has done very well, as has the counties. The county's year-to-date is up a little over 9%. A lot of that is Oak Ridge. Oak Ridge year-to-date is about a little over 10 and a half percent. So the bulk of, of the county's increase is Oak Ridge. So sales tax has looked really good this year.
It looked good last month too. Real good.
Yes.
Any questions for Gal?
Thank you Gal. Code's enforcement, as requested last month, Jason Stokes has done a top 10 list that we just got today. It's not on your Dropbox, but we've provided you a written copy. Jason was off two weeks ago. I was off last week, so I've not really got a chance to talk with him. He's also was off today, but specifically if you'll take notice to number five, which is 101 South Severs Boulevard, which is Magnet Mills, kind of give you an update on what's going on there. Jason talked to the contractor last week. Kind of work has slowed down over the last four or five weeks, but as Jason has stated here, the contractor that has been doing the demolition work has stated that they now have a contract for the sale of the property, which will include extensive excavation of the property. The contractor says they have agreed for the sale of the property and a contract has been signed. They also expect that they will let him resume work on clearing the property this coming week. Also, kind of in conjunction with that, two weeks ago, we were contacted through our attorney, by their attorney, wanting to know the final payoff on all the liens of the property, which we gave them, and we received that final check last Friday. So all the liens that we had placed on the property have been paid off, which I think over the last eight months totaled about $107,000. So, so all the liens that the city had placed on it have been cleared.
You know who's...
We don't.
Well, I'm really glad to see this, this top 10 report coming back out.
Police Department, surplus computer equipment. We have removed the mobile, the following mobile portable computers for service due to age and outdated operating systems and recommend they be declared surplus and placed on the GovDills website for disposable. One Dale, Inspiron, 6400, and 13 Durabooks.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you Mayor. Public Works Department, street resurfacing project. Sold bids were received on Monday, July the 8th for the resurfacing of several streets in the Westwood Estates subdivision. Based on the review of the bids, we would recommend awarding the project to Duracap Asphalt at a total estimated project cost of $358,000, including approval of specific unit prices for a quantity overruns of asphalt at $89 a ton and milling at $2.66 a square yard. This purchase will be funded through the Public Works Project, Capital Act Law projects.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roger, can you, now, so they're going to do the milling and do the asphalt. Were we, were we going to do everything inside as far as the curbs?
This, this does not include the curbs. It'll, it'll mill the outer edge, well, probably that, three to four feet.
The mill, inch and a half, go in seven foot, zero, so big wedge milling.
Be wedge milling, so they go out about seven feet, mill into the curb and that way existing curb will stay. Now, anywhere where the curb is not good, and I think me and Dwayne drove it about two months ago, some parts of Westwood has good curbing, some parts don't. And our thought process was, instead of trying to pay another $250,000 to put all new curbing down, wherever, and a lot of this will have to be cleaned up because there's grass.
down, wherever, and a lot of this will have to be cleaned up because there's grass grown over and we'll have to do that in-house beforehand. Whenever we do the milling, the paving, wherever there's bad curbing, we'll go back in-house and repair that curbing in-house once we're done. And we'll save quite a bit of money by doing it that way.
You know, I said several years ago, I was never going to approve Duracap as far as paving, because they didn't do a very good job inside Clinton. I'm looking at Gail when I say that, because she knows what I'm talking about, so. But I did talk to Lynn Murphy today and he kind of, he saw some things that they've done in the past that looks really good. There's probably some things that we didn't do, we're going to do differently this time than last time, so. I won't give them another, I mean, from a vote standpoint, I'm going to go ahead and vote for it, but this is, hopefully they're, for me, it's going to be their last chance because this is, this is a big area.
And we, me and Dwayne's talked about, we'll probably do a little better due diligence on having an inspector on site. We'll meet with the company and probably the owner prior to actually signing the contract, giving the bid out, talk about some of those issues, make some assurances that we don't have these and...
Okay. When are they supposed to start?
The bid said somewhere when August 1st.
Okay, it's coming up. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you Mayor. Also, we just opened this bid this morning on the LPRF grant for the South Clinton Park bid award for the playground equipment installation. We had three, we actually sent three out, but we only had two turning bids back in. That was Miracle Recreation out of Kentucky and Tennessee and Playground Equipment Services. And low bid was Miracle Recreation for the playground installation of $25,000 and the surface installation of $2,000, or $2 a square foot. And that's who we recommend that we go with.
You don't need any motion for most of it, do we do?
Yeah.
So can you repeat that, please?
Okay, the recommendation is Miracle Recreation with a playground installation of $25,000 and the surface installation of $2 a square foot.
Hear motion for approval?
Salute.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just curious, what was the difference between the bid?
Playground Equipment Services was $38,000 for the playground installation and $3.44 a square foot for the surface installation.
Do we, are we close enough to talk about timeframe yet?
What are we, JB?
I think she said the end of August versus September, so we'll have our equipment, so I'm assuming we'll start soon after that.
And...
We'll start, oh, you mean, start installing it at that time?
Yep.
Wow, okay.
And once again, it's just been...
Oh, it's...
Holdups that we jumped through with the state. Gail and JB had to attend another workshop last Friday, two Fridays ago. It was mandatory that we attend.
Okay.
Dwayne did give me an update and it was through an email and helped me, Dwayne, on the Eagle Bend project. They pretty much got the grade work done, but now they'll have to wait on Pal Clinch to come in and lay the new gas line in. It's going to take about a month installation of the new gas line. So once they get that done, Dwayne and them come back and have some more grade work and gravel to put down, how long will that take?
Shouldn't take too long as far as restoring the bend over.
So probably at that point, we'll be ready for somebody to put asphalt down. So we're probably six to eight weeks, I would say, still out, depending on weather conditions.
All right. Any other discussion regards to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Do you want to talk about the grant we received last week?
Forgot about that. We did receive Wednesday, Thursday last week through the Randy Boyd Foundation, the Dog Park Grant for the Carden Farms, South Clinton Park, which will be actually kind of the first thing that goes into that park. We have been working on a new entrance into it, kind of some of the field that we're taking out of the Eagle Bend project, we've been hauling over there. So we've extensively widened the entrance into it, so that's been going on for the last six to eight weeks. But this will be the first actual structure that goes into that. We've got till 2022 to actually spend the money, finish it, so next phase will kind of be a design. But we did get $25,000 to kind of seed money to start that project.
The grant, we tried again, that 17 acres, when is that, when are we supposed to hear something on that?
We got a notice, or you got a notice, I seen it in your mailbox a couple of weeks ago, it opens up next month.
Okay, okay, good. Any other questions for Roger?
I had a question going back to Magnet Mills. I noticed that the demolition contractor's name is Charlie Pratt. Is he related to Greg by chance?
Father.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks Roger. Under ordinances and resolutions, second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 643 for the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget amendment. Hear a motion for approval?
Don't move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Denny?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 643 passes on second final reading. Under adoption of resolutions, resolution number 779, this is Public Entity Partners' Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. Would you like to speak on that?
Public Entity Partners is the new name of the pool, which is our insurance carrier for liability insurance and also our workers' comp. This is just a grant they offer to buy safety equipment for our employees and it's just a matching grant. What's the...
Our maximum is $6,000 on this one.
So it's a $6,000 grant that we can buy safety equipment for employees and...
Is this, have we done, have we done this before?
No, this is only through the workers' comp. You know, we're just back with them with workers' comp, so it's been a while, I guess, since y'all have done this.
We did it for liability equipment before. Last year we bought cameras, so this is actually for employee equipment, though.
Good, good. Hear a motion for approval?
Don't move.
First and second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number 779 passes on first reading. Any old business before us? Any new business? Had the acceptance of the Clinton, the City of Clinton 911 Emergency Communications District Budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Mr. Bremmer, would you like to speak on that? Do you have any questions for Archie or maybe even Bill? Is that your else fund balance that I saw on the bottom right? I'd say you might have to make some contributions in some place. Well, I appreciate that. Hear a motion for approval? Do we, do you need a motion for this? Hear a motion for approval?
Salute.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn? Means adjourn.
Can I have the money?
Got ET out 14.
Too tired.